The board is back in open session. The time is now 6:02. Are there any motions?
Yes, I move that the board authorize the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement and take related actions to sell parcel ID 55P00073125.001 as presented to text dot.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Do we have any other motions?
Yes, 5B. I move the board authorize the superintendent to negotiate final terms and enter into an agreement and take related actions to sell parcel ID 55P00073125.001 as presented to text dot.
Thank you, Mr. Winn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. With that being said, the special meeting is closed. This is the September 17th, 2024 Montgomery Independent School District Regular Board Meeting. The time is now 6:03. Please stand with me for the invocation and the pledges to the United States and Texas flag. We'll start with invocation. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you so much for this great state that we get to live in, and thank you in particular for the city of Montgomery and Montgomery ISD. Thank you so much that we have such wonderful teachers, staff, administrators. Thank you so much for the students and families that live in this district. Please be with us and give us wisdom as we make decisions that will affect all of those involved. We love you so much, dear God, in Jesus's name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and individual. All right, do we have any special recognitions this evening?
We do have some special recognitions this evening. I'm going to ask Ms. Carrie Fitzpatrick to come up and introduce some people that are here in the audience tonight to recognize some of our staff, and then we've got some other recognitions we'd like to do also.
Good evening, Board. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to recognize some very special individuals. We're going to start with a recognition for Lincoln Elementary. If you have been in or around education in the last several years, you are likely familiar with the term professional learning community, and you may even heard it referred to as PLC. PLCs are collaborative groups where educators work together to improve student success. They do this through ongoing collective efforts, and in this PLC process, there are four essential questions that are asked. What should students know and be able to do? How will we monitor and assess student learning? How will we support students who struggle? And how will we enrich students that excel? Schools that consistently apply these principles and demonstrate improved student learning can earn the status of a model PLC at work campus. Tonight, we proudly recognize Lincoln Elementary School, our first MISD model PLC campus. Principal Carrie Ashlock and her team have exemplified the PLC process, significantly enhancing student growth and embedding their approach into the entire school culture. Lincoln Elementary's achievements will also be featured in the January issue of All Things PLC. Joining us to honor Lincoln Elementary staff and their exceptional work and dedication to the PLC model is Darren Grissom, Texas State Director for Solution Tree, and I would like to invite him as well as Ms. Ashlock and her team up to receive the recognition.
Good evening, Board of Trustees. I just have a few things that I would like to share with you. I'm in celebration of Ms. Ashlock and her team. As Carrie said, my name is Darren Grissom. I'm the Executive Director for Solution Tree here in Texas, and I just want to emphasize something that she said, and that is she went over the four questions that many of the PLCs such as Ashlock, Ms. Ashlock's team focus on, and those are all student-centered questions, and that's really the magic of the work. The four questions themselves, there is no magic bullet, but as this team has exemplified, when you're focused, everything you're doing during the school day on those four questions, you've kept your entire team student-centered and student-focused to figure out what they need by name, by need, to be successful and have the best education they possibly can. There's only about 130 model PLCs here in the state of Texas, and you are one of our newest, and we're excited to be here for the first time in Montgomery. So congratulations to this team. Congratulations to you all. We like to come to the board meeting because this is very much a community award. Yes, it is hard work by Ms. Ashlock and her team and classroom teachers and the students they serve, but it is the entire system from the superintendent all the way down, including the Board of Trustees. You have many pressures on you to keep your eye on the prize, keep the main thing the main thing, which is helping and supporting kids be the very best they can be, and this award represents complete alignment for all of your systems. So congratulations to you all, and obviously to our newest model PLC, Lincoln Elementary.
Mr. Grissom, Dr. Ruffin, Board of Trustees, Ms. Fitzpatrick, we're excited to be recognized as a model PLC at work campus. It takes three years to earn that designation, and over the past three years, we have greatly improved our understanding of what makes a professional learning community successful, and we've fine-tuned our methods to bolster student success. We have achieved some accomplishments. We've moved from a C-rated campus to an A-rated campus. We've been named as one of the top 10% of Texas elementary schools by U.S. News and World Report, but no matter what metrics you use, there is a visible difference in the way our staff has been approaching learning. We use data to make informed decisions and ensure high-quality learning for every student every day. Three years ago, we established our core common beliefs, our mission and our vision, and made professional commitments to each other that we would hold each other accountable for. Our vision is a school where the community and the staff are dedicated to collaboration focused on ensuring high levels of learning in a safe and supportive environment, where there's a relentless pursuit of continuous learning for all, and this recognition to date affirms that we are living out our vision. Each week in our, for our newsletter, our staff shares shout-outs and celebrations, and this past week, one of our staff members submitted a celebration that kind of sums up the experience of many of our staff. They wrote, "Having been part of the model, having been part of the PLC process for several years now, I can honestly say I don't know how any school can grow without it. As a team, we come together to focus on what all of our students need, not as individual teachers, but as a united front. I'm grateful for how far we've come. The journey's been long, full of learning, and sometimes stumbles, but every step has been worth it for our students and the growth of our school." And I did bring some of our staff members today, and they just wanted to share a real quick, short expression of what the PLC process has been for them. Laura Lynch, our interventionist.
Thank you. Without the support of PLC, our student growth remains confined to the limits of our classrooms and perspectives. As an interventionist, I can collaborate with fellow staff members to ensure that our goals are met and our students achieve meaningful growth.
And then I have Kayla Simons, our instructional coach.
Professional learning communities have helped our teachers become more trusting and vulnerable with each other. PLC practices have also helped our teachers and our leadership team engage in discussions that enhance teaching practices and improve student outcomes. One of our teachers recently shared with us that she doesn't know how she would function without our collaborative meetings. Our teachers' knowledge of their learning standards and improvement of their instructional practices over the last three years has been amazing to watch.
Then I have Pam Lawson, one of our 5th grade language arts teachers.
At Lincoln, our PLC process has transformed the way that we collaborate, not just within our grade levels, but also vertically. This intentional planning has allowed us to meet our students' diverse needs, ensuring that every student, every day, receive high levels of learning in a safe and supportive environment. This intentional collaboration has allowed us to meet them, and I don't want to just meet them, but our students that require additional support to reach their academic goals, they're doing it. So we are PLC.
She's so eloquent. Then I have Polly Kloschman, one of our special education teachers.
I love being included in our campus PLC. As a special education teacher, we do not have many opportunities to sit with general education teachers and collaborate about students. Together, we've been able to share expertise and differentiated instruction and strategies to meet diverse needs of all students. I'm able to see and understand the curriculum and instructional methods used in general education, allowing me to support students better. I've been able to share my expertise in behavior management, assistive technology, and accommodations, as well as update teachers with student progress and interventions that I've been successful. I'm beyond proud to be included in the campus PLC, to be part of a collaborative, collaboration and informed and inclusive education setting that benefits both teachers and students.
And I did have a couple more teachers who just came to show their support. Kiara Chayarn and Tiara George.
Thank you all so much for taking the time to come, and I'd be remiss if I didn't shout out for a grand, brand-new master's degree we have sitting over there, front and center. Brand-new master's degree over there. I'll say this, when I went around last spring and just met with all of our teachers at every campus, y'all almost looked me in the eye and said, "If you dare touch our PLC, we'll have mutiny on our hands." And it is impacting the masses at Lincoln Elementary, and we just appreciate the fidelity in which you've done it, and Ms. Ashlock, obviously, your leadership. It's not always an easy process to get people to be comfortable in the growth in the uncomfortable stage. So kudos to you, and thank you all for being here.
Switching gears, I wanted to be sure, first of all, that you all know how proud I am to be part of this district. We constantly work together to ensure that our schools have the supports and resources they need to be the best that they can be and provide the best possible education to our students. As you know, doing this work does not come without challenge. Recently, we were tasked with a decision that involved looking for additional efficiencies to satisfy a staffing need at one of our elementary schools where enrollment superseded what our expectations were. When discussing potential solutions, we determined we had three choices: do nothing, which really wasn't a choice in this situation; recommend a new position, which we didn't have funding to support; or find a solution within our existing resources. Well, when it comes to our students, we know the real only option in this situation was to look at our current staffing. When exploring options at each of our campuses, we found that Stewart Creek Elementary was slightly overstaffed due to lower expected enrollment. After careful consideration, the decision was made to reallocate current staff from Stewart Creek to Creekside. Although on paper, it seems like this sort of decision should be easy, when you know you're disrupting the lives of others, something like this is not taken lightly. The beginning of the school year typically comes with excitement as staff make preparations to welcome their new students. This entails spending hours of preparations to make sure everything is just right. Classroom decor is warm and inviting. Desks and tables are arranged perfectly to promote learning. Lessons and materials prepared. This evening, I have the opportunity to introduce two of our elementary staff members that have had the experience of classroom preparations multiple times in the recent weeks. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to recognize these amazing educators who have proven their understanding of the greater good, who have demonstrated selflessness by volunteering to move from one campus to another so their colleagues weren't asked to. It is my pleasure to introduce Melinda Wilson and McKay Kousha. Ms. Wilson is beginning her 16th year of teaching in Montgomery ISD. During my time in Montgomery, I can tell you she has been a cornerstone in our district, and she has demonstrated outstanding dedication to the Stewart Creek community. Her commitment to her students has no limit. Ms. Kousha, a first-year teacher, recently graduated from Texas A&amp;M University and is beginning her teaching career in Montgomery. Her perspective has been one of openness and optimism. Even during what I know what has been a challenging start to her very first year, she continues to smile. We are incredibly grateful for their willingness to step up and contribute in this new capacity despite the timing and challenges. Recently, I visited each of them as they were working to set up their new classrooms, and the response they offered is exactly what makes Montgomery special. With big smiles during what I know was a trying time, Ms. Wilson stated, "This is what we do. We take care of each other, and we make hard decisions so others are taken care of." The flexibility and grace these ladies have shown in volunteering to join a new campus after the school year began is appreciated more than they will ever possibly know. Please join me in recognizing them as they embark on this new chapter.
Ladies. Ladies, I just want to say thank you, and I went by and visited with y'all last week at Creekside. Ms. Kousha, I can imagine that through your education courses at that university, I skipped that part, that you didn't really have a section or a class that you went to that talked about how to move 20 days into the school year to a new building and learn new kids and new parents and engage in meaningful relationships all over again. And honestly, on the flip side of that, Ms. Wilson, with the years of experience you have, it doesn't make it any easier. And so to have one that is on her first day of teaching and then one with the history you have within Montgomery ISD, both stepping up and saying, "Well, where the people will go," and then to come into the rooms last week and see the energy and the brightness and talking to Ms. Smith and the response that y'all have had from parents, meeting their teachers for the first time, and their kids, it's just, it is what makes what we do so meaningful and special. And honestly, this is something that could have been overlooked pretty easily, but we understand the magnitude of the decision y'all made and the willingness to serve that y'all stepped up to the plate to do. And I want to recognize also that it was a coordinated effort, and Mr. Mansfield and Joe and David and the team on the maintenance side of stuff stepping up and saying, "Hey, just pack up. We'll move you. We'll get it over there." It really is a team effort when it comes to that, so thank y'all so much.
And I will say, Ms. Matthews was not happy that either of these ladies were leaving, but I will also share that Mrs. Smith, who, Ms. Matthews and Ms. Smith are both here, Ms. Smith has been beyond excited.
And Ms. Matthews is a team player, too. Thank y'all. Let's go take a picture.
Thank you. Two of you in the front. Dr. Ruffin in the middle of them. Yes, please. And then you guys stay, and PLC will come to you, or Lincoln will come to you, PLC. Would you like to be in this too? Okay, Laura, go up behind them. There you go. Find your little window. Okay. All right, ready? One, two. Good job. Thank you.
we have any this evening? No? All right, moving on to consent agenda, item five. Are there any board members that would like to pull anything from the consent agenda? All right, with that being said, is there a motion? Mr. Dennison, thank you. Turn your mic on. All right. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Winn? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Moving to our action items, item 6A, consider approval of easement agreements with Energy Texas for utilities at the CTE Ag Science Center as presented.
Mr. Mansfield.
Good evening, Board, Dr. Ruffin. So the first item we have is an easement that is actually on our CTE property, and what it would do is it would allow Energy to get power with an above-ground line that connects to a below-ground line that would then connect into the transformer and into the school. And these easements would definitely benefit the district or the school and the site, and we are asking for action tonight on that. And I'll be happy to answer any questions.
All right, are there any questions? All right, there are no questions. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the easement agreement with Energy Texas.
Thank you, Mr. Dennison. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Moving to item 5B, consider approval of August monthly financial report as, yes, no, I'm sorry. Let me move down a little bit. 6B, consider approval of easement agreement with Keenan North Development, LTD as presented.
That is a relief. I would not want to give the financial report.
Sorry about that.
But yeah, so the Keenan North Development borders our property in an L shape, as you can see in your board packet, and that development surrounds Keenan and Oak Hills and goes kind of along the pathway in the entrance into both schools. What we're requesting today is to allow an emergency vehicle, egress or access point there that would be gated and only allowed for emergency vehicles to use, but with that, we would also get a sidewalk access that would allow students to leave that neighborhood, that development, walk onto the school grounds, and access both Keenan and Oak Hills if necessary without having to come around on Keenan cutoff to get there. So we believe it's definitely a benefit to the district to allow this access, this agreement, and it would cut right through in that drawing and hit kind of the top part of Keenan, the park, the driveway there, but again, emergency vehicle access only. Would not be open for cars to come in and out of.
Any questions?
Is there any, how's the pathway portion of that going to work? Is there any way of locking it down during instructional time, or is this something that stays open consistently?
Are you talking about the pedestrian portion?
Correct.
The pedestrian portion, they could technically, I guess, walk over that, the gate, but they could put a gate there, is what we discussed as well. But, so you know, Keenan Elementary, the places where kids play, there's a six-foot fence there now and secured, including a sliding gate that's new this year that we had installed to keep anyone from entering that very easily, that area. But yeah, they could walk into that area. They could, and then climb over a gate.
Yeah, it wouldn't be into the school itself. It would be no different than them walking into the parking lot.
Okay.
Yeah, and then we would, and that's something that Mallory will work through, I'm sure, but having people available to greet those walkers as they come across, and even, we talked about painting a pathway where we'd want them to come down that sidewalk and cross. It's on, if you've been to Keenan, before that turnaround right there, it'd be on that side of it, so they're never crossing traffic right there, and cars typically don't go to the back unless it's emergency vehicles only.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
That part of the property there has a high embankment, correct?
It's pretty steep.
So are they going to go extra wide so it's more visible than just have it just the width of the road?
In our conversations, they've got to grade a lot of that down, and the steeper embankment is the farthest away from where this is going to go. So of the grading that's got to happen, they've got to pull a lot of that stuff out of there anyway, so it shouldn't, it won't be the hill that it is now.
Okay. The engineers won't let them do too steep of a grade, but they said they'll make it, and we have an existing fence there that'll stay as well.
Any more questions? All right, is there a motion?
I move that the board authorize the superintendent or designate to negotiate final terms and execute a road access easement agreement with Keenan Northern Development and to take related action.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Robb. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving to action item 6C, consider approval of technology purchase over $50,000 with bond funds.
Ms. Amanda Davis.
Hi, so this is for summer 2025. This is our third time coming up here. So what we are asking for is to purchase all of our panels for next summer. We were in talks with our vendors about the panel that we want. It is being discontinued, so they are trying to get rid of that inventory, and they dropped that price significantly. So what we had budgeted for those panels, we're actually saving, if you look at the RP, is about $1.3 million off of that cost by being able to purchase these and store them until we're ready for them for next summer. So this covers the triplets, Keenan, Oak Hills, MHS, and then we already have CTs ready to go for next summer.
All right, any questions?
Why are they discontinuing?
They're changing the model. So when they change that model, there's little changes that they make, either to the front of the panel, the bezel, like our first model was an A, which had a black bezel around it. The new model is white bezel, and that's the biggest change that happened to it. They can't give us an estimate of when the new model is going to ship. Our best guess is not, it's not going to be able to ship even until June, and so depending on when we would be able, were able to purchase the newer model, we wouldn't know if we would get it in, in time. And so in order to make the district consistent in how the classrooms work from elementary all the way to secondary, staying with our current model and not changing to a different vendor or to a different style of panel has been our goal. So we wanted to make sure that we are keeping with our standard.
Is there a concern of being able to get parts or people to work on these?
The parts are mostly interchangeable. I mean, again, it's placement of where an HDMI cable goes, the color of the bezel, placement of where the USB goes. That's been the biggest changes. Most of those parts are under warranty, so they're under a three-to-five year warranty, and they can still be re-made. In this, we do purchase probably about 10 extra for the district, so that way, if there is something that happens, that can be hot swapped, so that way, classroom instruction can continue. So that way classroom instruction can continue. And then that way, that broken machine goes back to the manufacturer. It gets repaired, it goes back into our inventory, so that way if that happens again, we have enough leeway to be able to replace if we need to.
So if we have that kind of savings, is there, is there any reason why we wouldn't extend a warranty on not only those, but the rest that we have as a district?
And we've talked about that. So our warranty, and we can, we can extend that with our manufacturer. The biggest piece that we were talking about today was about the service agreement. We do not have enough damage right now to our products to be, to warrant continuing a service agreement where somebody's on call constantly. We're still in that phase of kind of punch list items. So our vendor is always on site. They're coming out, they're doing RMAs for us, you know, that free of charge type of thing, because again, it's still under that, our first warranty, our first service agreement.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions?
Are these the same panels that we couldn't find contractors to install?
Correct.
So what does this do to us now?
So this is for... How many campuses is this? Seven campuses? So out of the seven campuses, two of the campuses are Keenan and Oak Hills. We are still having conversations about what that work looks like and who's going to manage that. What we have decided to do with the triplets, so Stewart Creek, Madley Ranch, and Lone Star, is to put that under package. So now that we have purchased that equipment, there's still additional pieces, so like the mounts that go on the wall, the digital displays throughout the building, those things will come to you again for that pack, for that piece, but we wanted to do it all at once when we knew everything else. Those are actually going to be general contractors installed, so that has actually gone under Huckabee to be able to install those. MHS is going to be the same way. CTE Building, Keenan and Oak Hills, would, right now are still owner furnished, owner installed.
Where are we going to store all these panels?
So we have chosen to have our vendor store them. We do not have a place for, to store, you know, 500 panels. So the storage cost for us is about $122 a panel, and that is from October when they receive them until the end of July when we expect the install. And so even that savings, they average about $1,200 a panel right now. So we anticipated $150 for storage and we actually got it for 122.
Thank you.
Sure.
Could we not store some here and not pay the fees for all of them?
I would love to say yes, but I don't know what's going to happen with the NX or where all of our storage locations would go on that one. And delivering them to the campus, you know, that they're going to be installed in, that's going to be the hard part, is where are you going to store them when there's classrooms being used and all that stuff. And as soon as they come in, we will schedule a visit to the warehouse to look over the inventory and sign off that they are there, everything's accounted for before we issue any kind of payment.
So we don't actually take possession until they come here, right? So...
We're taking possession when they get to the storage, because that's all, I mean, that's 500 panels that we're asking our vendor to store. So we will walk it, we will sign off, because we've chosen the storage location that they are at. And then we will pay for the storage fee when they get here. Because we don't know if we're installing in May or if we're installing in August.
So we're going to have to put inventory tags on all 500?
Yes. Good thing I ordered like 10,000.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? All right. Is there a motion?
I'll make the motion to consider approval of technology purchase over $50,000 with bond funds as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Nguyen. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? That motion carries. Thank you so much. We are moving on to item, or seven, information items.
Yes, Dr. Busby's going to come and discuss district improvement plan and campus improvement plans. Trustees, it's an informational item because it's not something that y'all actually have to approve. It's a working, living document. And so Dr. Busby's going to kind of walk through the process. It's all in the board book. It's 500 and some odd pages with all of our campuses. So thank you, Dr. Busby.
Yes, so as you mentioned, this is a routine activity that we do this time each year. We bring our district improvement plans and our campus improvement plans to you. So there's a black screen. So basically, what the rule up there was, was just what our policy says, is that each year, your job as a board is just that oversight of are we doing this process? And so this purpose is to show y'all that we are completing that process to ensure that we do have those. In these district improvement plans, you're going to see our district goals. And these goals are the goals that the board adopted. So during the 23-24 school year, you adopted these five categories of goals. And that's what this work is done off of, is to support those five goals. So this screen here is actually a screenshot of a program that we use to help organize our plans. We start with a district improvement plan. We start by entering each of the goals into that system. So you can see the five goals there. Part of this whole process, as we were developing this, you heard a lot of talk about strategic plan over the last few years. So that strategic plan is our driving force. It's our roadmap of where we're going over a long-term process, over a five-year process, 2024 to 2029. So that long-term process, that long-term goals that we did, as we're working through all those, you're going to see those reflected in the district improvement plan. So while they're two different documents, they complement each other and they work together. And so in our plan, you're going to see this setup. Under each goal, you'll see the goal and it'll state what the goal is. Underneath that goal, we have performance objectives. So this is what are the underlying goals, sub-goals that we're going to use to try to meet, to reach that overarching goal. And then strategies are developed. And so these are the specific activities that we do as a district or they do as a campus to help reach that ultimate goal. So that's kind of the format of each of the plans. There's also quarterly evaluations that can be done, and within our program, we have this tool available to us. And so at each quarter, campuses and districts can look at this and see, okay, what kind of progress are we making on this goal? Is it something that we, maybe we haven't started yet? Maybe it's something we've accomplished? We might look at it and say, we're making good progress on this, but this is something that's more than a one-year goal, so we're going to continue it. Or we may have finished it or changed course, and so you can also discontinue a goal. And that can be tracked within this plan progress as well. So in addition to the district plan as a whole, each campus also develops a campus improvement plan. So the campus improvement plan has the same overarching five goals. But their plan then can be customized with their own performance objectives and their own strategies that help meet those district goals as well. Or it can be very specific laser focus that that campus is working on for their individual goals. So with the development of a campus improvement plan, these are kind of the things that a campus goes through as they're working on this. It's collaborative work. This is not something that a principal sits down at a desk and writes out on their own. They have a team so that they're working towards that common purpose. It should be a culture of continuous improvement. So like Dr. Ruffin mentioned, the reason you're not approving an actual document is because it's a working document. So as the year goes on, if they need to adjust, they can adjust. If they need to add a strategy, they can add a strategy. It's a continuous improvement model. There is stakeholder involvement, so each campus has a campus advisory committee with stakeholders that's allowed to review this and give input. A lot of times, they do subcommittees and get additional input for each of the goals that they're working on. If they are a Title I campus and they receive federal program funds, they have additional requirements that they have to add in there, so if they have Title I money, the plan will reflect how they're planning on spending that money. So if they're hiring additional staff, that will be one of their strategies. A variety of data sources are used. They collect all of this information through the year. In the spring, they'll really start working on, okay, where are we at as a campus? How are we doing? When you get assessment results back, they'll look at how they did on their assessment results. They'll pull all of those data sources together. And this is what we call a comprehensive needs assessment, so that's part of the plan as well, too. That's how they then come up with the additional performance objectives and strategies that they use on their campus. So the next couple of slides are just some highlights. And so like you mentioned, hundreds of pages that are in your document to kind of peruse at your leisure to see what's there. But just so you can kind of see what some of the campusers are doing, you like to highlight some of our campus's strategies. So Creekside, who is a new elementary, so they just opened up, but they are one of our Title I campuses. So they're, one of their strategies talks about how they're using those funds for an additional staff allocation that they can then use for intervention. Keenan Elementary, one of their strategies, their goal, too, is to talk about counseling groups and what their counselor will be doing with, working with students and then having these kid talks with teachers. Lincoln Elementary, they have a goal where they focus around vertical content collaboration, where they work on that. Lone Star has a specific goal where they are focusing on morning accelerated instruction time. Madley Ranch, they, and there's lots of strategies through here, so I just picked a couple of different varieties so you could see. Communications, it's always good to get feedback, so one of their communications goals is about sending home an annual survey to get parent feedback. Montgomery Elementary, also about communications. There's all types of communications that they focus on, but they are one of our dual-language campuses, so they do make an emphasis to make sure that they send that out both in English and Spanish. And then Stewart Creek was really focusing on student growth, so some of their strategies focus around tracking student growth. From our secondary campuses, we have Lake Creek. Lake Creek has a goal that says collaborate with CTE. And if you have looked through your board book, you might have noticed that that particular campus is not actually in your board book right now. So we had some technical difficulties getting that one into the program, so that's still being done. When they're all complete, I will send that final copy of that to you, so you have it. This is from its 23-24 plan, but CTE is a focus at Lake Creek. Montgomery High School, focusing on instruction. This is what we call our tier-one instruction, so that direct explicit instruction from our teachers. Montgomery Junior High, MTSS, that's been that process, it's multi-tiered systems and supports. So really, that kind of intervention that we do with students, they're focusing on really building that strong process. And then Oak Hills Junior High had a strategy about identifying students early so that they don't get behind and we can get that intervention done as soon as possible. So that's just a couple of highlights. Again, you have a copy of these plans in your board book. Each of these plans will be posted on the district website, so I'll send you that link when that is complete. And that also becomes a part of our annual report, which is also posted on our website. So any questions?
Any questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you so much. Item seven B, accountability update.
Dr. Summers is going to come and overview, touch on the legal component of the accountability system right now that we're, all districts across the state of Texas are tied up in, and then just give us some highlights of with what we do know and what is public and published by the state. Where are we sitting and what are we looking at?
Yes, so good evening. This would normally be the point in time where we're supposed to come and talk about A-through-F ratings and all of that. And that's not where we're at because of the state of Texas, and I have a couple of slides that will highlight that. So what we will talk a little bit about, so you remember about this time last year, I was supposed to come and talk about A-through-F ratings, and there was a lawsuit. Several districts sued the state of Texas to prevent release of the scores because the accountability, according to the law, the accountability manual has to be approved prior to assigning ratings. They didn't approve the 2023 manual till November of last school year. And so that's been on hold. That lawsuit is still out there. Good chance that it's never really resolved, and '23 is probably never going to have scores assigned to them. Then we sort of fast-forward to 2023 or 2024, and guess what? There is another lawsuit that has been filed by a few districts. And the argument on this one is that if you have a new assessment, then it's supposed to be, again, according to law, vetted and verified for its validity from a agency outside of TEA. And so that was not done, at least that's what they're arguing. There was also a component of some artificial intelligence scoring for some of the extended constructed responses. And so that is all sort of tied up together in the lawsuit. And they actually were supposed to have, the first hearing on August 26th, they moved it to actually yesterday and today. So we'll see if the judge who heard the case yesterday and today has a ruling anytime soon. We'll kind of be watching that to see if they either stay and keep the injunction in place or make a ruling of some sort. And we'll kind of hear from that. So as of today, this is where we're at. So in lieu of that, I did want to share just a little bit of the results of how we did on STAR as a district last year. And so this chart has a lot of stuff in it, but it sort of tracks the last four years that we've done STAR testing. Some sort of post-COVID era, if you will. And so the ones that are highlighted with the red box, that is 2024. That's our most recent STAR. And what I wanted to highlight on there, this report basically shows approaches and above. And so this is all tests if you passed STAR test. And that's what the state uses to score academic achievement or to rate that. And so this is approaches, meets, or masters. And as you can see by the highlight of the green where it says MIC, that means we were above, higher than the state average for approaches. And then what you see in the parentheses to the side, if it's in red, it's a minus, that means that's a percentage drop from 2023. Or if it's a green, it's a percentage increase, or then no change is what NC is. So what you will notice on this, these are the elementary campuses, you will notice from '23 to '24, we did have a little bit of a drop in a few of the tests. Again, different groups of kids, but it is good to kind of track a grade level content area over time, as well as, I've got another slider where we follow the kids as they go through school and move from grade to grade. But what you will notice on the far right in that red box are the state approach numbers. And you'll see that the state as well saw a drop from '23 to '24. And so that is some of what's in that argument in the lawsuit. There, I do not have the data. I don't have access to it, but some of the argument in that lawsuit that was made yesterday and today was that some of the AI scoring may have influenced that. There was quite a few districts that saw sort of the percentage of students scoring ones or twos increased by upwards of 10 to 15, 20% in some districts. So they're going to sort of hash that out and find out. I say all that to say that we did have a little bit of a drop, but it wasn't out of line with like what we saw across the state. And we still are performing well above the state averages, as you can see, 86 to 72, 81 to 68, just kind of going across the roads there, 91% to 79. So we're still doing well with the approaches, but we did have a little bit of a drop there. For the secondary campuses, for junior high and high school, those are the two charts you see there. Similar thing, you'll notice everything is green, so again, we all, all of our campuses in each of the content areas outperformed the state for approaches, meets, and masters together. But you will see the, sort of the red parentheses down the, down the line there. And again, if you go over to the state, you'll see the same. There was a few that we might have had a little bit of a bigger drop. We had seventh grade math. We saw a, about a 12-point drop, and so we are looking at that. We did have some features that might have contributed to that. We had loss of staff member and had a, had a long-term sub and some other positions in there for a little while, and so that could have contributed. So we are breaking down that data and taking a look at that. But again, it is above what the state averages were for that. And for high school, again, you can see there that we outperformed the state on English I and II, algebra, US history, and biology. One of the things I like to do, this is a very busy and weird, confusing graph if you don't see it often, is track cohort. So in other words, we like to compare last year's fifth grade to the year before's fifth grade. That helps us, that gives us some data, but those aren't the same kids, right? And so what we'd like to do is also track it in terms of cohort. And so the easiest way to look at this chart is kind of work from the right to the left. And so if you just start at the very, very bottom, like eighth grade math, 75, that means, and this is at meets and above, which is sort of our in-house standard. We, we know our kids are going to do probably pretty well and meet the approaches category, but we really try to focus on meets and above. And so for eighth grade math, we had 75% of our students scored. And so for eighth grade math, we had seventy-five percent of our students score meets or above. When they were in seventh grade, and I'm going to kind of get to this in a second, it was fifty-one. When they were in sixth grade, if you just kind of keep following the blue and a diagonal line there, you'll see they were at sixty-five and sixty-three. And what we want to see is obviously those numbers stay pretty close to the same or improve. That would let us know that as students stay with us and move through our grades, that they're performing well. I do want to point out, seventh grade math is a little bit tricky to compare, because what happens is, is we do advanced sixth and seventh, and so those students take the sixth grade test. And then if you're in advanced seventh, you do half of seventh and all of eighth, and so you skip the seventh grade test, you take the eighth grade test. And so the seventh grade typically sees a little bit of a drop, so if you see across that line where it's highlighted and with the red box, that's because all of the, if you will, the advanced students, GT students, they're either taking the sixth grade test or the eighth grade test, they don't take the seventh, and so that's just a, kind of the, the regular students, if you will. Whereas the sixth grade tests will have a mix of students, the eighth grade tests will have a mix of students, and then obviously, the algebra test has students that are taking algebra as eighth grade or as ninth grade.
Are those algebra scores in here, or are they separate?
Say that again?
Are those EOC, like the ones who took that eighth grade EOC? Is it, it's not part of this then, for those?
Yeah, not part of this one, this was just tracking the sixth grade. The EOC, it's hard to compare, because all those tests aren't the same. We can track, you know, like from reading to English, but they don't, the science and the history tests don't have that. And then if you look at reading above, you can kind of track that, too. If you go again from the right, sixty-three percent of our eighth graders, when they were seventh graders in reading, it was sixty-eight, fifty-eight, sixty-one, so you can see growth there. You can kind of follow the purple line is the previous year. So that just is another measure that we use. We kind of look at from year to year, and then also as the students are with us. And so students are, by and large, doing well. You can see those numbers going up or staying about the same. So with that being said, oh, go ahead.
Dr. Summers, can you go back to that slide? And kind of go into the legal challenges that have been placed against TEA that has halted some of these things? If you, you see that column in the middle that says STAR redesign, this is a challenge, right? This test is changing, and if you look at how we did prior to the redesign to after the redesign, it's almost all across the board, we've dropped. And again, with the, looking at the previous spreadsheet that we had where it compared us to the state average, we looked from year to year, we're dropping again. We had Ms. Ashlock and her, her team up here. We're not getting worse at teaching, I promise you that. We are, we are putting immense amount of efforts into being collaborative and being data-driven and all those things, and so that is the challenge that is facing us in public education as we, and this is my belief, there's no need to define our, our campuses, because our campuses represent people with a letter grade. You can't sum that up by any sort of metric like that. So I just wanted to point out that STAR redesign piece dropped everyone. So, thank you.
It did affect all of us. And you remember last year when I was sharing about the accountability, I kind of used that pinata analogy, right? And we were blindfolded, we're spun around, we're trying to hit the pinata, and somebody's, not only is the pinata, do we not know where it's at, but somebody's got a rope on it and kind of pulling it up and down, and makes it really hard to hit the target. With that being said, I did want to share, so one area that I think as a district we can increase on and do better with, and is a point of focus for all of our campuses this year, is academic growth. So that's one area that the state measures. The approaches is, did you pass the test? And then academic growth is, did I get a year's worth of growth according to the, to the scale score of the test from one year to the next? And if you look at, this is a summary of all of the students that took a math test in, in, whoops, I don't want to walk away from the mic, all the way from, around the district. And what the circles show is a student who might have moved from masters in twenty-three to, to meets in twenty-four, or perhaps high approaches and that kind of thing. And so what we want to do is, as a, as a district, as a campus, and we have these conversations regularly, is find those students that are in the circled red group, so that, say, we had two-hundred-ninety-three students, that they still scored well. I mean, meets is a good score on STAR, but the year before, they were on masters, and we want to find out, why was it that, that Chris got masters in twenty-three and still performed well in twenty-four, but not quite at the level before? And you can go that way. So we're tracking that, we're looking at those students, trying to kind of find out where that was, make sure those standards are taught well. So that's an area we're focusing on. This is reading. Again, you can see, by and large, we had like a thousand thirty-two students score masters and repeat as masters the next year, but we had four-hundred-forty that, that dropped to meets, which is still, again, a high bar, it's a high score, they're ready for the next grade level, but we want to make sure they stay at masters, and you can kind of see that. And to accomplish that, like how are we going to look at, at improving academic growth or ensuring that every student has that year's worth of growth? We really want to focus on just three things, authentic student engagement, so really making sure the instruction in the classroom is relevant, tied to the teaks, engaging for students, really thought-provoking, getting them to really understand the content and know what to do with the content. Then we really want to make sure we have good evidence of student learning, whether that's a formative assessment, an end-of-the-unit assessment, a performance assessment, the assignments that we ask them to work on individually or as groups. So we really want to have high levels of evidence that's really going to show us that the students are, are learning at a mastery level. And then lastly, collaborative professionalism. We heard about that tonight, right? That's just another way of saying PLC or collaboration. We know it's working well at Lincoln, and they got awarded tonight, and we want all of our campuses working together, because we know as a profession, we should collaborate. No one wants to go to a doctor, right, that never collaborates with other doctors? Not a good, not a good choice, I would say. And so we want to collaborate, but then we also know by collaboration, we improve the profession. We know we get better as teachers and leaders in the, in the district. So those are the three things that we're going to focus on to do that. And then lastly, what I want to point out, too, is I agree with what Dr. Ruffin said, you know, we, the, the A through F rating that the state wants to give out, that's not how we're going to define ourselves. We define ourselves in a lot of other ways in Montgomery ISD, and our focus is, is revealed in our strategic plan. And to that point, we revised some of the things that we're looking at with strategic plan with goal number one. And I just highlighted a few things on here, but you'll notice academic growth with our performance objective one, we really want to make sure all students have that year's worth of growth. That we also have a grade level proficiency in what we look at, so we, we want to measure that, and then we want to close gaps. We want to make sure all students perform at the level of, of sort of our overall percentage. So we don't want any of the subgroups of students that we have to, to underperform. And so to do that, we're going to use things like district's universal screener, so we do that with iReady. We do a beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year. That helps us understand some of the gaps our students have beyond what a STAR test, because a STAR test is one test, one time a year, and that shouldn't be the only measure that we have for how students are doing. We use those universal screeners to give us some of that background information. Then we also use district-based assessments, so we use unit assessments, we do benchmarks twice a year. That gives us another window into how our students are doing. And so all of those things sort of together will give us a broader picture of how our students are doing, and those are the things that we're going to track in strategic goal number one, strategic plan goal number one. So that's our focus moving forward. Questions?
Any questions? I just want to reiterate that I feel I could speak for the board in saying we're always proud of our, our campuses, our staff, our students, and that this is just one piece of information, and we all understand that. And so we're always behind in supporting what's going on in our schools and how our kids are achieving. It's fantastic.
Yeah, they're doing great. All right. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Anything else, Dr. Ruffin?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right, we've come to the end of our agenda. Thank you all for being here tonight. The time is now seven o'clock. This meeting is adjourned.